Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Sumter County Council regular meeting for Tuesday, July twenty seventh. Ms. Beatty, would you please give us an introduction?
Let us pray. Our dear county husband and father, they are as dear as one in whom we live and move and have our being. We thank you for allowing us to come to this meeting to do the business of the people. And we ask that you abide with us and to help us to go through our agenda with wisdom, clarity, and understanding. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of my voice. We ask that you continue to protect our men and women who serve in uniform, keep them safe, especially those who are serving in harm's way. We thank you for those who have survived the COVID, and we ask that you continue to protect us in this pandemic. Help us to not take things for granted, but to be obedient according to your will. These are all blessings we thank and ask you for me again.
It is my pleasure this evening to meet the biography of our veteran who will be leading our pledge of allegiance. Retired U.S. Army veteran Mary Glass earned the rank of E eight Master Sergeant after serving a total of twenty seven years of reserves and active duty service to our country. The hardest of those years was spent away from her family in Baghdad, Iraq, supporting Operation Iraqi Freedom. Much of her time now is spent helping her husband Stephen with his home improvement business and serving the Sumter community as a member and area coordinator for the Sumter South Carolina Combat Veterans Group. Veteran Glass has married Stephen Glass, and they have three beautiful children. She currently lives in nine district, County Council District Six. Thank you for your service. You proceed, Chief.
Good afternoon, everyone. Have you all joined me in saying pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
It is my pleasure, on behalf of County Council, to present you with this special appreciation. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that my mic, you're being the guinea pig.
Oh, I see that bar.
I see this bar. It's a, it picks up everything a lot better than these microphones, these boom mics, if you will. So we're trying it out, yes. You saw, you are our official guinea pig.
Thank you. Mrs. Brandy, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, those are there, no change.
They were proposed. It's been moved by Mr. Baker, seconded by Mr. Baker, that we approve the agenda and a discussion. Any one all in favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have a motion to approve the minutes for our regular meeting Tuesday, July thirteenth. They're proposed. They're moved by Mr. Baker, seconded by Mr. Bird, that we approve our minutes for our regular meetings Tuesday, July thirteenth, in a discussion. Any one all in favor of approving our minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. No land use matters. Ordinance twenty one nine fifty seven, before council takes action on this item, there will be a public hearing. Mr. Brandy.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we're ending up putting up for you the picture that says the whole triangle, I think he has a cursor on it now, so it's bottom of those two. A lot of rectangles, and that will square off the property of the St. Matthew Church. That's what they're asked for, twenty two acres, and given ordinance to approve sale, and then a fine for two thousand four hundred dollars.
Any questions before public hearing? Any questions, Ms. Brandy? Now we plan a public hearing for ordinance twenty one nine fifty seven to be open. Anyone speaking, wanting to speak for or against this ordinance, please proceed to the mic, state your name and address. Any one? Public hearing is closed, they're proposed. It's been moved by Mr. Baker, seconded by Mr. Bird, that we have second reading for ordinance twenty one nine fifty seven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mixon, I guess, is recognition of senior corporal Gary Beaver.
Yeah, we're to share.
Okay.
That's how he was in the office, and then he just stood.
I understand, and I can see you, Mr. Brandy. Mr. Chairman, council members, if we could go ahead and play the video.
Senior Corporal Gary Beaver has served probably about fifty five to sixty thousand public papers thus far, and he has not been approved for St. Matthew's Division. When I was assigned to the Sumter Forces Division, which was at that time called Mark's Division, he was actually the one that trained me. And throughout these many years, you know, it's been a wonderful experience working with him. He's been loyal, very proud, and very consistent. And he is certainly the United Secretary of Sumter County Sheriff's Office. I had the opportunity to work with Gary, and I was assigned.
We will play this over in just a second. It's not loud enough.
But just like when everyone, you know, he was scared down, he was certain emergency papers, something that had to be served. We were looking for someone, we needed to get someone served right away. I would always say, like the old classic sitcom, you're old enough to remember.
We tried this, this, um...
Of course, he got it done. Probably should have called Dennis. Deputy Beaver has always maintained a very professional attitude. Also, supported his, uh, his, not letting anything else, not getting over excited. Also, if landlords or tenants get upset, Gary doesn't have one job, uh, keeping order. I think that's just, you know, calm, professional attitude. Most definitely it was tragic, but because of his quick response, we were able to resolve what was occurring. Unfortunately, we lost one of our own, Corporal Andrew Gillette. But because of him being able to respond, because of his training, he was able to respond the way that he needed to, and the threat was, was deleted.
February of twenty twenty, Gary Beaver was deemed a hero. On that particular day, our community mourned. I had to say, well, he was, he was a friend of mine, was the friend of my wife, was the friend of my wife. Gary Beaver was being a hero.
We're gonna start the recording over. I apologize. I want to make sure that this is seen, because I watched the entire presentation, and it's really, it's really awesome.
We were looking for someone, you know, we needed to get someone served right away. I would always say, um, like the old classic sitcom, you're old enough to remember, Leave It To People. Of course, he got it done. Probably should have called Dennis.
Deputy Beaver has always maintained a very professional attitude. Not only looking for, but also with the parties that he had, um, had to serve process. He does not let things get to him, he does not get over excited. Also, if landlords or tenants get upset, uh, Gary does an excellent job of keeping order. I think that's just due to his calm, professional attitude. Most definitely it was tragic, but because of his quick response, we were able to resolve what was occurring. Unfortunately, we lost one of our own, Corporal Andrew Gillette. But because of him being able to respond, because of his training, he was able to respond the way that he needed to, and the threat was, was deleted.
February of twenty twenty, Gary Beaver was deemed a hero. On that particular day, our community mourned. I had to say, well, he was, something took effect, you know. A hero is someone with intent on making this world a better place to live. Senior Corporal Gary Beaver is that hero.
When it comes to the loss division, you know, we do our best to help each other in every way that we can. You have to have that type of relationship to be able to say that, you know, I have your back. If you need me, I have the back. When it comes to Corporal Gillette, he was the same way. He would often say, you know, Lieutenant, you need anything from me, um, quick to ask, quick to already respond before I have to ask.
Corporal Andrew Gillette, the two of us, a pleasure, a jokester, everything we feel about loss.
He was, he was a pleasure, he really was. It was hard, and it still is hard, and the community just, you would just be walking along, and they would actually stop here and say, from a prior point, it's good to know that people really do still care.
Mr. Chairman, council member. Darkest day Sumter County Sheriff's Office has had since nineteen ninety six, when we lost Charlie Brown. Bitter Sweet doesn't cover it, because it was a tragic situation that none of us want to face, but he was faced with a decision on top of experiencing that trauma. He would have it any other way, so. Gary Beaver, I believe, this December is twenty one years? Twenty five? I'm not wrong, it is. He's been around, he's a pillar of this community, he's a pillar for the foundations of Sheriff's Office, and as you heard testimony in that video, he does his job, he does it very well. Um, we're extremely proud of Gary Beaver. We don't want to have to go through what he went through, but he had to face it, and he handled it, and he handled it well. While we lost one of our own, he protected himself, he protected Sergeant Kraft, and he faced something that I just, I just can't imagine. And I was their men that's behind me, the act commander. We're extremely proud of him, he's already been presented with a medal of valor previously, and just last month, Sheriff Dennis and the Sheriff's Association was pleased to be able to announce Corporal Beaver was chosen as the top deputy for the state of South Carolina by the Sergeant Association.
Mr. Chairman, council. Thank you, yes, thank you, from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate it, on behalf of the sheriff and sheriff's department, sheriff's office, my family, great.
Thank you.
All people, on behalf of Sumter County Council, I want to present you with this small token of appreciation for your twenty five years of service and for your heroism. We appreciate you, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Next item on the agenda, on the, no, I'm sorry, on doing business, we have a presentation of our twenty twenty annual report that's going to be put online, and that presentation will be by Joe Perry.
Sheriff, I should introduce Joe, are you gonna run from there? Okay, hold on. Um, as y'all know, twenty twenty was a crazy year, uh, in our community and this country. The work continued with your county government, and we are proud to present tonight what we call, what we are calling the annual progress report. Many, many years ago, we had something very similar, it was a hard topic, uh, but we thought we would use the advances of technology and put this online for the public to see, and, uh, actually would have, I believe, a great deal of exposure. But Joe has put a lot of effort into this particular project, uh, again, it, it, it encapsulates all the things, or many of the things that the county government has passed year in twenty twenty. We hope to make this annual report, uh, and Joe will at this time kind of go through it, and if you have any questions, you can ask.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Happy to present this report to you. It does have the most recent budget, it's slightly delayed, I was getting it out, but, um, as we're on a fiscal year, we have the newest budget information in there. Thank you to our finance director for helping out with that. So, this all started last fall, had discussions with Mr. Mixon and Ms. Dennis about bringing back the annual report. And, uh, as Mr. Mixon said, decision was made, just make it digital, make it very easy, whoops, this mouse is a little more sensitive than mine. So, broke down the budget a little bit, um, introduced all the council members, your districts, simple contact information. Um, right before the election, voter registration got a grant, and, uh, I'm gonna skip ahead, obviously, I want you all to check it out. It is live on the website, and I had it so published about twenty or thirty minutes ago, it should be live at this point. It's a fifty page PDF. Um, there's the council information, as I was talking about, information about our budget, some of our elected officials, how our taxes work, and where do they get them? Um, so that was last May, over at the gym, large scale construction project going on there, pretty exciting. A rundown of all the painting projects, I won't go through each one of them, um, Liberty Center, demolition of distressed properties, it's a lot of activity. So, here, one second, so that's the corner, EMS, really nice look they did over there, by the way, huge morale boost for EMS in particular. You know, they were pretty cramped in the old office. Um, as I said, we highlight economic development, they were plenty busy last year. We gotta do a brewery out of the deal, so, good for us. That was, I just learned recently, at least for now, it's the largest brewery in South Carolina, which I did not know that, and there is a new one under construction, but at least for now, we have a large brewery, pretty neat. Our office, uh, voter registration got the grant, I went out and took pictures, um, various polling stations, helped out Ms. Jefferson, document the grant, as, as well as report for storeable property. That, because it was a, so much voter turnout, really high voter turnout. So I started off my year at the old gym, and I had a feeling that it's gonna be the last basketball jamboree there. And, uh, one of the reasons I did a year review and photos, because I really felt like it, it really showed how we started off pretty normal, I guess. There's Ms. McCain over at Sumter County Courthouse, human trafficking, where and say. Um, new lighting system for our airport, our art gallery, grinding of the greens. We had, uh, a bunch of students over at the Judicial Center, seeing how criminal justice system works. There's some painting projects, uh, public safety work leaders. This was a young man I met, and he's, uh, trying to be a military aviator, and at the time, flying lessons were extremely busy here for... Of course, we're gonna talk about Corporal Gillette, how he served our community. Um, and this was one of the reasons I have this meeting, this was one of the last meetings before everything shut down, and, uh, Mr. McCain talked to you, a vision and progress meeting. And then, as you can see here, that was the, um, this meeting, this was the emergency meeting, right after the state emergency was declared by our president and the governor. So now, as you can see, everything started shutting down, de-cleaning protocols, parks are closed, um, we lit up courthouse in blue. Kind of flyover, show our, her respect, admiration for our first responders. Civic center turned into a, a testing site. Someone put a mask on Tom Sumter, wasn't mean, and then I did not do that. Thought about it, but I didn't do that. Another flyover, this was from Shaw, this was taken from the, the brewery. Some painting projects updates. I don't want to go through the entire year, but I still wanted to show that, for instance, these are some painting projects, um, still making progress. Crystal Lakes was incredibly busy, I've, I've never seen that, that many golfers, naturally, social distancing. Um, and we did have some, some softball and baseball camps, which was nice for the kids. Testing site out at Rafton Creek, uh, Mayville, there's, of course, here's pictures from council meetings at Patriot Hall. Uh, this gentleman right here is the first administrator for Sumter County. I, I think, I've said, I heard, he just got a new convertible, a hundred years old, good for him, went over there with Mr. Mixon, and we talked to him for a little bit. Nice gentleman, got some football, soccer scrimmages going on. As you can see, it was a, was a pretty interesting year, there's, of course, the ribbon cutting for our, for new flag park, for the veterans out there. Administration building, getting a new seal. Right after the renovations were complete, this painting project, Ms. Bronson moving into the courthouse. Christmas tree lighting without the singing and the kids, but we lit, lit the tree nonetheless, and then right at the end of the year, Ms. Dennis and Ms. Rogers, there was a bunch of donations, um, for these assisted living communities. Community sources helped out, pack these, uh, little care packages, and a lot to them. So this is kind of my favorite part, these are various employees of, whether it's Sheriff's Office, EMS, baby shoemakers at Patriot Hall, Ms. Noldo over there at Sumter Court. Um, I just wanted to put them out there with their own words, showing off our workforce. And, um, so you'll see a lot of quotes, and our employees talking about their jobs and what they do. This young man, by the way, has a black belt, in case we ever need that, over in Family Court, he's a, a nice young man. But the idea was just to show off these people, these are volunteer firefighters, um, out there at Beach Creek, Stephen and Brittany. And then, uh, so we added litter, obviously a huge issue, and we wanted to show people what we're doing. The glass, uh, those are the B fifteens, but these right here are these young people, those are the air force officers who are out there right across from the base, and I spent a little bit of my morning with them. They're just outstanding, there's a group of officers that were right outside Shaw doing cleanups, and then a little further down, Patriot Parkway as well. I, I recently, uh, tried to update the history on our website of Sumter County, looking at different historical sources. Um, that took me a while, these are all, it's all pretty well-known history, um, if you know Sumter a little bit, everything is sourced, and, uh, there's my sources right there, and King Gregory, Cassie Nichols, and Dr. Samuel Way helped out, he read through it as well, made me feel better about it, make sure I had everything pretty correct. I know historians will debate sometimes about whether something happened in eighteen eighteen or eighteen seventeen, but Dr. Way helped me out with that. This, by the way, these are, these postcards, I'm pretty sure it's Thursday night over at the, uh, museum, they're gonna have a little, they've been on display since July eighth, I think. It's historical postcards of Sumter County, and there's gonna be a little reception there, Thursday night. Um, Annie shared those with me, I just think they're pretty cool. So, work is already underway on the next one, um, obviously, collecting photos and making note of all the noteworthy events going on. Um, happy to answer any questions, if y'all have any.
Any questions, Mr. Perry? Good job, Joe.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are we gonna do a hard copy of this? It's a, it's a rather large document, but certainly if council would like for us to do that, we could probably make a link. Look it over, uh, see what's in there and, uh, give it a try and, thanks a lot. But Joe, thank you. This is a labor of love for Joe. His background is perfect for this kind of stuff. Um, he gets excited about it as we all do, but, um, truly the, the opportunity to, to share time with our employees is probably to me the most valuable. Uh, it, it highlights some, some special people that make this county work. So please give it some time, look it over and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, ordinance number twenty-one nine fifty-four, third reading.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council. Twenty-one nine fifty-four, in order to approve the, uh, removal of a paper street, then there's, uh, Artino Avenue. We've been over four. I would say that there have been changes. Second reading, anyone has questions, I'll put that in.
Political approval. It's been moved for approval by Mr. Baker, seconded by Mr. Bird. Any discussion? Do you remember, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Third reading to order, twenty-one nine fifty-four is approved. Order, twenty-one nine fifty-five.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council, twenty-one nine fifty-five is in order to approve a easement to allow a city to put water sewer along property that the county owns along Racetrack Road. And Mr. Blaney has a picture of that, uh, that all fit on one screen, but we've been over four. Let me just say that there have been changes in second reading. Anyone has questions, I'll put that in.
Move for approval. Okay, it's been moved for approval by Mr. Baker, seconded by Ms. McGane. Any discussion? Do you remember, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Audits is approved. Third reading, order twenty-one nine fifty-six.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council, twenty-one nine fifty-six adds the words, the removal on disposal to the public works on a race, uh, committee so that, uh, section two tag, two forty-eight, page seven is amended. No changes in second reading.
By Ms. McGane, seconded by Mr. Bird. Any discussion? Anyone all in favor of approving order twenty-one nine fifty-six? Please, aye. Anyone opposed? Next item on the agenda. Um, the fiscal tax and property committee meeting was held today. All members were present, along with all of the members of county council. We received, uh, extensive updates on our previous penny, future plans for our future penny. It was all for information only. No action was taken by council.
Mr. Chairman, the digits, number four?
Number four, we already handled. Right, that was a public hearing. Okay. Next item on the agenda is report from county council meeting, members of other meetings, trainings and conferences.
Mr. Chairman, we did hold, yeah, this was called inaugural meeting last night of the litter committee. Held at Patriot Park last night. No action was taken, but introduced everybody and county administrator. Okay, the county administrator spoke and the city manager also spoke about some of the things that they were doing and plans on, on doing. And it was a good meeting, I thought, first meeting. They're gonna meet monthly, I think the third Monday of every month from now on.
Mr. Chair, um, I'm glad that the litter committee is fine with that. And I would request that for future meetings, if council members could be, so to notice, because they may want to attend as well. I appreciate that. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Lovely reports, Miss Brandy.
The sheriff's report is in council's packet. In addition to the sheriff's report, there is, um, information concerning the conference coming up. Also, the aviation, um, you're invited to Sumter County Airport showcase in avionics services ribbon cutting. And we really would like to have all council members to that on August the eighteenth. And we also have information in the packet for Nova Molecular will be having its groundbreaking. Let me slide up here just a second so you can see it. Each of you should have received an, an invitation because there's information in there about the actual groundbreaking and then a social later. So if you haven't seen that, let me know. And the animal shelter ribbon cutting, which is a penny project as well, is on August sixth, that, um, from ten to twelve. And the planning commission has this information in there and they also have a meeting tomorrow. And there's the building department report as well. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Brandy. Mixon, county administrator, report. Come now to the public comment section of our agenda. Citizens desiring to speak are limited to more than three minutes. Comments are to main group chairman. Anyone wishing to speak to county council, please proceed to the boarding of the state's name, public record, public comment. It's now open.
Hello, I live in West York. My name is Michael Miller. I live in Horatio. I'd like to thank, um, Councilman Washington. I called him the other day about some issues, um, that we have in the community. And, and he informed me, uh, I'm glad he got back with me. Um, he's the type of person that he's, he tells you he's gonna do something. I found out that he's, he's gonna do it. Might not be at that second, but he got back in church with me. But, um, anyway, one of the, some of the concerns that he had, and he, like I said, he informed me, um, was about our roads. Um, and all of vegetation growth, the trees growing up, it's just, you know, not properly being, uh, trained because of the grass and the trees in. And he informed me that was the state, um, our state representative. So I will get with her on Thursday at the lane. And also, I guess, another, um, problem we had was, you know, when we called for spraying for mosquitoes. Um, you know, I'm saying like, when I called, I don't know, county has to do with that, for spraying for mosquitoes. But when I called, I, you know, recorded, um, I, I received a return call and I'm the type of person that I would bed, go to sleep until late. And not unless they come after one o'clock. I haven't, you know, noticed, uh, them coming in areas spraying for mosquitoes. But my main concern is you shouldn't have to call them, constantly call them if they're coming spraying for mosquitoes. It should be a constant, a constant thing because we do have a problem, you know, in that area. But once again, like I said, I'd like to thank, um, um, some of Washington for his concern and following up with me, or with us with, um, with some of the issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else wishing to address council?
Mr. Bird. Everybody, my name is Mr. St. Hater. I got, I know y'all are doing right now. But nevertheless, what I come to protect, I got some old business to set before y'all anyway, but I'm gonna protect new business to y'all. You know that I'm the head of Crossway Community Improvement Committee. I don't know if y'all know that there's, uh, 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 we go pop in here, all those buildings that Richard and Bird over there in the Crossway area. And, uh, they took out all those apartments there. Um, I see y'all talking about penny taxing. What I desire to happen is that we build apartment right over in that area. Where, where all those buildings been destroyed at. I'm saying that either behalf of Crossway Community Improvement Committee. So that's what I come before, that's one of the things I come before council to ask them to take these considerations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak, council? I now declare public comments closed.
Luther, your turn.
Mr. Chairman, uh, before we adjourn, can I discuss something that I think is very important? Uh, I just was looking at the, uh, I guess the Southbound State Association focus magazines. And they talked about what was going on in Manchester, about the drug problem. And I know that when we were talking about the frequent calls that EMS and other people are having in our county about the overdosing, uh, abuse of, uh, drugs. I think, and I, I'm, I'm asking you that, would you address that issue in this county and try to get some of the organizations like the coroner, the sheriff, the law enforcement, others? Because those are people that are involved with the problem in that concern, getting them organized. The annual health services, because we have a serious problem here in Sumter. And I think we are not addressing it. And I feel that it's an issue that needs to be addressed. So I appreciate it if you could look into that and see how we can start addressing that issue here in Sumter County. Thank you.
We have motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.